Good evening. Welcome to the Kern County Planning Commission. Regular meeting, June 13th, 2024. I will call this meeting to order. Please call the roll. Commissioner Ashley?
Here.
Commissioner Dunbar?
Here.
Commissioner Nance?
Here.
Commissioner Oliver? Commissioner Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Seeing none, approval of the minutes from May 23rd, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With a motion in second, all eyes?
Aye.
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 Great. Motion pass. Item D, cases withdrawn or requests for continuance, we have none. So we're on to consent agenda. These are items scheduled before the Planning Commission, which are being recommended for approval by the staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask questions on the case. We have two cases, number one and number four. I'll pass this over to Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, madam chair members of the commission. The two items are actually number two and number four this evening. So the first case on consent is case number two. This is zone change number 42, map 166. Our applicant is Daniel Tufts and Janine Luis Trager Tufts by Smith Co. Survey and Engineering. This project is located on the eastern terminus of Lookout Place. The request is a change in zone classification from E1 to E2 and 1/2 RS that would facilitate a future lot line adjustment on 1.96 acres of a single parcel of record. The staff recommendation is to advise your commission to recommend the Board of Supervisors to approve the zone change as requested to become effective upon recordation of a certificate of compliance per lot line adjustment, enact ordinance, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The next item of consent this evening is case number four. This is CUP 14, map 12519. The applicant is the County of Kern General Services Department. This project is located on the south side of Hilltop Drive, approximately 605 feet east of the intersection of Weed Patch Highway and Hilltop Drive in the unincorporated Lamont community. The request is a conditional use permit that would allow the construction of a community park on a parcel of record totaling approximately 7,000 square feet in an R1 MH district. I would note that your commission did receive an addendum staff report. Subsequent to setting this for hearing, the General Services Department indicated they would like to have two additional 8x10 umbrellas that were located as part of the site plan. So we have included that as the overall site plan that is before you this evening. That doesn't change our recommendation, and the staff recommendation would be to approve the conditional use permit. Again, this is with the revised site plan in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. That completes the reading of the consent calendar tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any members of the public who would like to remove an item from consent? Seeing none, are there any members of the commission who would like to remove an item off consent? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is writing to the record.
Second.
With motion and second, we'll vote on screen. Four eyes, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any right to appeals, Mr. Murphy?
There are, Madam Chair. For case number four, this action is final. So for projects where your commission's action is final, those actions are subject to an appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person. No development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. That appeal may be filed at the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $562 on forms we have available at the department and on our department website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of your commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We're on to item F, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record before making a presentation. If you're interested, please come forward to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We're on to item number one. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. All right, item number one this evening. So this project is consideration of our 2024 through our 2031 housing element. Just waiting to make sure that the PowerPoint gets on your screen. Madam Clerk, I believe that that's... All right. So again, this item before you this evening is the consideration of our 2024 through our 2031 housing element. So the housing element itself provides an identification and analysis of existing and projected housing needs. It includes a statement of goals and implementation programs that would help enable the county to meet the required regional housing needs allocation. So a complete copy of our housing element can be found on our department website at this location, kernplanning.com. We have a specific tab for housing, and the element would be located at that website link. So this process and this project itself has been in the works dating back to last year. Around October of 2023, the county initiated a public review of our initial draft housing element. After that public review period, which did include three informational workshop meetings, one virtual workshop meeting, the county then prepared and submitted to HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, a draft copy of our housing element for their review. Once that occurred, staff did receive some additional comments from HCD. Staff went through an additional analysis. We prepared responses to those comments, which have been provided to your commission in this evening's staff report, and we resubmitted our housing element to HCD for their second review as mandated by law on June 3rd of 2024. What we're doing here tonight is we're asking your commission to consider the housing element and make a recommendation that would then be carried forward to the Board of Supervisors before their final adoption. I would note for our record that the board will not be able to take any action until we've received any additional comments from HCD and addressed any concerns they may or may not have. At that point, we will present and make any changes as deemed necessary and have all of that considered by the Kern County Board of Supervisors before final adoption of the housing element. I have provided your commission with a summary of our public participation that we have included so far. Again, this handout identifies that we had targeted outreach to various community organizations. We had a number of one-on-one group meetings in conjunction with the county's preparation of our analysis for hair housing choice. We had workshops that discussed housing items as well. We conducted surveys both for citizens and for advocates and subject matter experts. Again, staff believes we've gone through a robust public review process to bring information and proposed programs that we believe are necessary to implement our RENA and that are appropriate based on the organizations that will help implement our affordable housing projects. So again, I wanted just to make sure and highlight for you this handout that does describe the overall public participation approach and process that we have conducted. So I also want to provide, and again, I know some of this is a little bit redundant as we did have a summary workshop for your commission, but I wanted to provide some community context in terms of the county in general and housing. So between the years 2010 through 2020, we did experience an 8% population growth. Between the years 2020 and through 2030, we have an expected 13% population growth for those years. The median home sales price in May of 2023 in various Kern County metro areas ranged from 225,000 to 382,500. We had a 4.2 vacancy rate for our unincorporated areas. And again, as just a reminder, given our land size, Kern County is the third largest county in terms of land area at over 8,100 square feet. For informational purposes, I do like to provide this graphic as it shows the 12 various county subareas that are utilized, a lot of transportation planning, and they do get referred to in a number of documents that, not necessarily that the county uses, but that our Kern Council of Governments uses and other organizations utilize. So again, I think this is just an appropriate graphic to help highlight how various organizations separate out the county in terms of subareas. So the housing needs assessment that was part of our project and part of the housing element presents and analyzes population and housing characteristics. It identifies special needs housing needs. It evaluates housing conditions and provides other important information that support the goals and programs that will meet our housing needs in the unincorporated area of Kern County. Again, just for further context, within the county, just under 600,000 of the population is located within one of our 11 incorporated cities, leaving just over 319,000 in the other areas. So those would be the populations that the unincorporated Kern County and the Board of Supervisors and your commission ultimately has jurisdiction in trying to meet the housing needs for those populations. Each of the 11 incorporated cities by law are required to process and prepare their own housing element in which they address their population needs within their various city. So the RENA, which again stands for Regional Housing Needs Allocation, represents the total number of housing units and income levels identified by the Kern Council of Governments that the county should work to and try to facilitate the construction of within the sixth cycle housing, within the sixth housing cycle. Again, those dates range from 2024 through 2031. This graphic shows the identified needs. 776 units that are identified for extremely low incomes, 775 units for very low incomes, 987 units for low income, just over 1,800 units for moderate income units, and then over 4,800 for above moderate. Again, bringing our total of 9,243 units, which the county is going to work to try to have and facilitate the development of within this six-cycle housing period. So again, this slide is a breakdown of the regional population trends by city. Again, these are from the years 2000 through 2021. I'd like to note here that unincorporated Kern County between that time period exceeded, experienced, sorry, a 0.3 population growth between 2013 and 2021. You know, what that means is that the majority of the population growth is occurring in cities. As shown on this slide, these areas highlighted in red, the city of Bakersfield during that same time period experienced 11% growth, California City over 13% growth, Maricopa just under 13% growth, McFarland a 12% growth, and in Shafter almost 17% growth within that same time period. Again, that makes sense as cities in general are more accustomed and able to provide the various infrastructure needs to help facilitate housing, especially when we're talking about more dense populations. In 2021, the average household size was 3.19 persons per household in the county. And then from the average household, it's a little bit lower, not much, but a little bit lower in unincorporated areas, 3.03, versus the incorporated areas, 3.27. Additionally, within unincorporated Kern, we have a slightly less homeownership rate than you would find in incorporated cities. In unincorporated Kern, our owner occupied is 56%, and our renter occupied is 43.6%. Again, those are a little bit more homeownership within the incorporated city areas. So this above graphic, this identifies the various household annual income levels. And then this below graphic in blue identifies the annual income for acutely low, extremely low, very low, low, and moderate households based on populations, sorry, based on numbers of persons per house. What is interesting to note of this one is that to be qualified as a moderate income family in Kern, a household of three would need to make an annual income of 86,700. A household of four would need to make an annual income of 96,350. These graphics are related to the median home and rental cost in Kern County. And of note on these graphics, the median home value is 241,400. And then 80% of unincorporated Kern County residents, they spend between 500 and just under $1,500 on rent each month. So again, the median home price does change depending on which metropolitan area you are located in. As shown on this graphic, the, on the lower side in Taft, the median home value is 225,000. Again, versus Bakersfield where it is over 380,000. This table is a breakdown of our annual income and persons per household in our acutely low, extremely low, very low, and our moderate income categories. What's important to note on this one, and as shown in these highlighted areas, is that anybody in this highlighted area would not be able to afford a home consisting, or costing, 225,000. That includes a single person who makes an annual salary of 67,450 per year. So part of our housing element is also required to look at various constraints associated with the development of housing, their primary costs associated with the construction of housing. And all of these constraints generally trend up, and the government has very little in indirect control of many of these factors. They include the price of the land, the labor in which it costs to build those residential units, the materials to build those units, and then the various permitting and processing and development fees that are required, both from local agencies and then other agencies and jurisdictions within the, I mean, within the state of California. So in addition to those types of constraints, there are additional constraints to housing that are unique to unincorporated specifically. This includes water availability, sewer septic use and availability, overall access, and then ultimately power to the various homes that would need to be constructed. So again, unlike the previous slide, the government does have a little bit more direct control when it comes to regulation regarding these constraints. Again, with that being said, the county does not manage any water and sewer. You know, we use groundwater if you're on some of the outskirts. You use community services district that manage the overall water. You know, that is different. There are some cities that have their own water, and so the county is at a little bit of a disadvantage when it comes to trying to develop and facilitate development when we don't manage some of those primary constraints and requirements when it comes to building and facilitating housing. Again, as I mentioned in a previous slide, the majority of the growth does occur in the cities, and again, that is mainly because those jurisdictions are more equipped to handle the required infrastructure needs, and that is even especially more true when we come to more dense development. So the proposed programs that staff is including in the six-cycle housing element do, are, and include an expansion of some of the most successful programs that we have identified from our previous fifth-cycle housing element. So again, your commission is very familiar with these as these items became, many of these items came before you for your consideration. But during our last cycle, the county rezoned over 290 acres to our highest designation of our R3 Zone District. The county has developed an online building calculator for residential use in which people can put in various characteristics of proposed homes, and they can get a sense of what the building and permit fees would be for such a unit. The county established a minimum 20-unit density within our R3 Zone District. Prior to those actions, even if you were zoned high-density residential development, a developer could come in and honestly build a single-family home. So based on comments received from HCD and some of our partners and community organizations that are concerned about our ability to build housing, staff initiated and rezoned not only property to R3, but we established a minimum density within all R3 Zone Districts. Your commission is aware, the Board of Supervisors took actions, and they've established a homeless navigation center right off M Street to help serve some of our homeless populations. And then one of the ones that I am actually most excited about, as I'm already starting to get use, and people have, especially from our housing authority, have reached out, is we've developed an online vacant inventory database. So you would be able to go on our website, if you are interested in a particular area for some sort of housing, you can look into that area. We have all of the vacant residential parcels that are located within that area that could potentially be developed. Anybody on the calculator and on the inventory would be able to put in some various constraints and some questions that they would like to help narrow their search. And then once they find properties, they can actually click on that parcel, and they can get a breakdown and a summary report as to what are the agencies, jurisdictions that would provide water, sewer to that area, things along those lines. And I am excited to say that I've even had the housing authority reach out to me. We've talked about it, and it is starting to get use in terms of people using that service and using that database to try to find appropriately cited properties to facilitate their developments and their proposed projects. So again, unlike our fifth housing cycle, this time we do have sufficient land in order to meet our RENA allocation. Again, that was at 9,000 residential units. So the focus that the county really took in this particular housing element is how do we streamline and facilitate development of these units? So I did provide your commission a proposed housing program list. They were located, this is exact language that was taken from your staff report. However, I did want to point that the areas in red are either new programs or expansions of existing programs that were identified after our first draft was prepared. Again, we did receive some additional comments, both from Leadership Council and from HCD. Based on those comments, we evaluated and re-looked at some things, and we expanded on some of the proposed programs that we are addressing. So what I'd like to do real quick is just kind of highlight some of these programs, just so your commission kind of has a sense of what I think are some of the most significant programs that will help facilitate housing. So I'm actually going to use the program list as opposed to the PowerPoint. Again, this first page kind of represents a number of programs that the county has already undertaken. Again, our role when it comes to housing, we are not developers. We are not builders. You know, we participate in a lot of the housing development as a supportive role. We helped identify land, we helped facilitate the permits that are needed for that housing, but we are not the group that generally will build those housing units. Again, there have been a few exceptions, such as the navigation center, but again, in general, that is not the practice of the county. So our focus is really geared towards what can we do to help facilitate housing and then also facilitate the ability to address any affirmative fair housing needs, comments, concerns, and things along those lines. So I actually want to start on page three of the handout that I gave you. Program 2.1, again, we have not done this type of action before, but the county and the Planning Department specifically are committing to semi-annual affordable housing workshops. You know, again, the purpose of these workshops would provide housing advocates information when they need it, help them be aware of what services we can offer, help make face-to-face contact so that they know who they can reach out to, things along those lines. The county is also proposing the creation of a dedicated housing unit. We have not had a housing unit. You know, anything housing-related was handled by various individuals, various units within our department, depending on what we had. Staff is committed, and we are proposing that we would create a dedicated housing unit, which would really serve as a one-stop shop for a number of things that we'll talk about as we kind of go forward. Program 2.3, committed to providing appropriate notifications to those who are interested regarding how they can be aware of when we have tax sale notifications, surplus properties, things along those lines, as those properties may be appropriate for affordable housing. We want to help make sure that people have a way of knowing when and where those properties and sales would occur. Program 2.4, an enhanced infrastructure financing district opportunity, so that if we have private developers that are proposing projects, they may be able to get some incentives in terms of some of the infrastructure capital and cost if they are willing to include a component of those housing developments that are available to our low-income families that are in need. Program 2.5, again, I had mentioned we'd established a minimum density in our R3 Zone District. The county is committed to looking at our medium-density zone district, so that is our R2 designation, and we would actually propose to raise and bring forward actions to raise the maximum density in an R2 unit from 16 units to 20. Again, with the purpose being that it would facilitate the ability to build a little bit higher density within our multifamily higher-density designations. Program 2.6, and this would only be familiar to somebody who has gone through the process, but the county would propose changes to our ordinance, and we would bring forward for your commission and the board's consideration, removal of the precise development combining district for all multifamily zone districts. We have enough standards, we believe, that if someone proposes a multifamily unit in property that is designated for multifamily units, there would not be a need to have a public hearing to construct and approve those projects. You know, they would be able to be built with standard conditions of approval, and again, if you're not in the process of doing this on a monthly, weekly, yearly basis, that is a huge deal, especially to the housing authority and any other Cesar Chavez Foundation and anybody else that builds affordable housing projects, how much that would assist them in terms of their timelines. You know, they're always fighting for grants, they always have to know whether or not projects are approved. It makes a big deal if there is not a hearing. And so again, that is a huge step towards helping to facilitate future residential affordable housing where we need it. We're included programs to expedite the development review for projects that include affordability, taking necessary steps, actions to help encourage the use of our density bonus program, which we have, in which residents can get, or developers can get a higher density, provided they provide additional services within various zone districts. The county is committed to trying to help maintain listings of program administrators and opportunities to assist first-time homeowners. Again, continue to pursue state and federal and other housing funds to help facilitate various programs. I'd like to touch base, program 2.13, this goes back to our housing inventory. We would maintain that up-to-date inventory of potential sites available for future housing development. Program 2.15, within six months of project approval, staff would initiate the process and pursue the goal of receiving HCD's pro-housing designation. That is an application that we would have to submit to the state. How the state allocates funds when it comes to these types of projects, if you are a pro-housing designation, you get additional points. Jurisdictions and applications that have the most points receive the most amount of funding. So that was something that was identified from us, from both the housing authority, the Cesar Chavez Foundation, and some of our other affordable builders, is that if we could get that designation, that would greatly assist in their ability to qualify and potentially receive some additional grants. The county will continue to provide fair housing services to county residents by fielding complaints, making referrals. Part of that goes into another program, which I'll discuss here in a minute. Program 3.3, you know, this is part of a comment that we had received, but again, some of the comments that we received relate to funding and programs, and you know, it takes time to determine and establish whether or not those types of programs are cost-effective. So the staff is proposing a program 3.3 that would commission a report. The purpose of that report would be to evaluate the implementation needs and costs, and then note effectiveness of establishing a county-initiated first-time home buyer, a vacant building rehabilitation, a rental assistance, and a temporary relocation and eviction legal support program. So again, a number of comments were received that those types of programs would be beneficial. It's very difficult just to say, yes, we can start that tomorrow. We have to go through a process to determine what does that mean, what does that cost, is it effective, where are the areas that we could do that? This program, program 3.3, is going to be our attempt, and again, to make sure that it's completed within two years of final approval, that we can present the board with some of this information so that they can decide whether or not those are types of programs that they believe are most effective in terms of implementation on a county-wide basis. We are proposing to have specific language on any project that includes general plan amendments, changes in zone classifications, conditional use permits, precise development plans, that will include dedicated analysis and findings related to how a project either will or will not affirmatively fair housing, or what obstacles that particular project could present. So again, this would help be a written statement on any project that comes before this commission or the board, where someone can actually point to, where staff has gone through that specific analysis and looked at that particular question in terms of our recommendation and ultimate decision of the project. Again, the county is committed to meeting, both in the community and having quarterly meetings, to discuss housing education and opportunities and resources within unincorporated Kern. The county is committed to establishing social media platforms that would help get this word out as well. You know, right now, I can tell you the Planning Department does not participate in that kind of social media platform or anything along those lines, but times do change, and people consume information that way. And so staff is recommending a program that would help establish such a presence so that we can help get information out, because some people do consume information that way. We would create a dedicated fair housing and resident complaint referral program where we would have a one-stop number, that residents can contact the Planning Department, and we would have staff that would be able to either answer their questions or make sure that we've provided them to the appropriate referrals and follow-up. Again, with the whole purpose of help making it easier to answer questions that, and help address concerns from the community in terms of all matters housing, whether it be their being evicted, what are their rights, whether, where they can find programs, find housing, things along those nature. Program 3.8, the county is committed to going through a countywide housing condition study where we will evaluate whether or not, or what our housing stock is, what are the age of our homes, how many of our homes are in need of repair or in disrepair, things along those lines. Again, that is information that historically the county has not had. And again, this is why I mentioned over 8,100 square miles. These types of programs and these types of efforts do take time, and I know that a number of residents would love to have that information immediately right now as part of this housing program, but we are committed to getting that information so that as we continue to move forward, we have some of that, so that appropriate decisions can be made in terms of funding and programs and things along those lines. Again, the county is conditions 3.9, 10, 11, and 12. You know, these are various clarifications where we believe we are absolutely in compliance with state laws regarding agricultural housing programs, regarding supportive housing residence, things along those lines. But words matter, and at times, how we implement our zoning ordinance is not as clear as the language could be. So the county is committed to, within three months of final approval, amending our zoning ordinance so that we can make sure and make the language very clear that the county is in compliance with all of these requirements in terms of what zones and what classifications and zone classifications these types of uses can be allowed to be incorporated into. The county is committed to having yearly meetings with the Kern County Farm Bureau regarding their pathway for establishing labor housing, which we'll talk about here in a minute, why we included that program. The county will continue to our partnership with PG&E in terms of posting on our website and trying to provide various links that are available for any weatherization and energy conservation programs that those utilities administer. So again, I do think the county has gone a long way, and this project is very comprehensive and propose a lot of programs really to, again, facilitate the development of housing, but really make the county in generally have better access and residents better access to the county regarding some of the programs that they are in need of and helping to find affordable housing. But with that being said, there are always programs that are proposed, which the county just at this particular time doesn't feel that we are in the best position to implement. So I want to highlight some of those just so you can have the understanding of additional comments and recommendations that were made, in which the county is not necessarily proposing programs specifically regarding what those requests were. The first request is that the county should have a rent control or a just cause ordinance. So one of the concerns with establishing a rent control ordinance in unincorporated Kern, again, we are competing, we are located adjacent to a number of cities. Establishment of such, those provisions, we are concerned, could have some unintended consequences. If the city of Bakersfield doesn't have such an ordinance, if other cities don't have such an ordinance, the likelihood of people pretending and, not pretending, developing and pursuing development within unincorporated Kern County could be less because there are more sideboards and there are more constraints regarding those type of uses. So again, it's the county and the staff's determination and position at this time that such that ordinance and program would be premature, given what our city neighbors have. That is the same with inclusionary zoning. Again, inclusionary zoning is a type of zoning where every single project that is built must include a component of it that is affordable housing. In a staff's opinion, through programs 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7, 2.8, 2.13, 2.15, program 3.4, that we are indirectly and directly helping to facilitate more affordable housing. And again, we have the same concerns that if we were to put such a strict mandate on projects that would be required to include affordable housing, city of Bakersfield, other jurisdictions don't have that, and we would actually make it more difficult for us to build affordable housing. I would also note that the conversations we had with both the Home Builders Association and the Kern County Housing Authority, it's their opinion that actually including such a provision will make it more difficult and more costly for them to build these types of developments, and that is just not something the county is recommending or the staff is recommending be included at this time. We had comments regarding community land trusts. This is where a trust owns land and then can either rent or, you know, provide some of that housing. The county's not opposed to a community land trust. To date, we have no organizations that have reached out to us that are wanting to establish a community land trust, but again, it's our opinion that such a program would be better implemented through a nonprofit of some sort as opposed to a county-initiated program, as it would require management, development, and oversight of that development. We had a request to establish a safe maximum indoor temperature threshold and a weatherization program. Again, program 5.2, the county has an effective working relationship with PG&E, and then additionally, the county goes through our cooling centers. We believe that the cooling centers, on days that it's over 105 degrees, provides more bang for the buck, I should say. You know, with the same cost, you can get opportunities for additional residents to be able to utilize these services so that they can cool down, and we just don't believe it's appropriate to establish a county-initiated program specifically for those uses at this time. A community task force, in theory, a community task force always sounds good, 8,100 square miles. You have to have representation from all of these areas. What people face in the valley versus the desert versus the mountain are very different from a geological and a, just a living standpoint. Trying to identify individuals to participate in such a task force, and then ultimately getting these individuals not to compete among themselves for various resources. Staff just believes that the process now is more appropriate to address Staff just believes that the process now, um, is more appropriate to address these housing needs as opposed to the creation of a community task force, um, where there may be a fight among limited resources when it comes to, um, implementation of programs. A rental registry, um, very difficult for the county itself to keep daily monitoring and management of a registry, um, for all units and things along those lines. That doesn't mean that as we continue to develop our relationship with, um, builders and people utilize our services and we get better contacts, we might be able to have some sort of, um, access or be able to point to where some of that could be. But again, it's just not, uh, appropriate at this time, the staff believes, to establish a registry. Funding resources, a commercial linkage fee. The county is always in competition to attract various jobs that generate tax producing businesses. That's both between counties, between local jurisdictions, from state to state. The establishment of such a commercial linkage fee, uh, would simply result in those businesses potentially being located in other communities. And again, there has to be a nexus for, um, a collection of such type of fee. In theory, it very much resembles a redevelopment agency, which was disevolved in California going back to February of twenty twelve. So again, the county is not proposing that, um, at this particular time. Expanded farm worker housing programs. Again, staff has included various programs, programs two ten, three ten, and four six, in which we are trying to make sure that we make people available and knowledgeable about how straightforward and easy a process is to establish, um, uh, farm labor housing. In general, they don't require on ag land, um, hearings and, um, again, staff is committed to continuing to work with our farming communities to help make sure that they're aware, um, of the process by which they could establish, um, such housing units as we believe it's more appropriate for those individuals and companies, um, to establish those programs and those housing as they know where and when and the best location for, for such services. And then finally, the last one, um, is legal guidance and service and attorney representation. Again, the establishment of a countyway program to provide legal guidance, services, and attorney representation in landlord and tenant disputes, staff does believe would be inappropriate. Such a program would have the potential of subjecting the county to unnecessary and undue litigation. With that being said, we did include program three point three where further evaluation and analysis will be done, um, and presented to the board of supervisors to determine whether or not, whether or not such a program is something that would be appropriate and cost effective. So again, I wanted to provide you that context, um, just so that you know that a lot of the comments that we've received that we didn't believe we could address, we did thoughtfully look at them and for the reasons I mentioned and that are outlined in your staff report determined, um, that we just don't think that they were appropriate programs at this particular time. So with that, um, I am available for questions, but the recommendation before your commission this evening is to advise your commission to recommend the board of supervisors to adopt a negative declaration, approve the six cycle, twenty twenty four through twenty thirty one housing element as requested, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. That completes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, and thank you staff for all of your hard work on this. Before we open it up for public comment, is there any commissioners that have any burning questions before they forget? Go for it.
So, uh, I know a lot of work went into this. Mr. Murphy, I, I noticed on, um, on the proposed housing programs, uh, if, if this is the identical document that's going into the record, I want to make sure that it's right. So starting with program three point nine and going through program three point one three, it says, uh, twenty twenty four to thirty thirty one housing element. So it's minor typo, but, but it does happen on three point nine, three point one oh, three point one one, three point one two, and three point one three.
Thank you.
So yeah, if we fix that going into it, then it looks good to me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, we will now open it up for public comment. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please come forward. Please state your name. We will have a two minute timer on the, uh, timer behind me, uh, but please remember to state your name for the record and spell your last name if you can.
My name is Sandra Plascencia, that's P L A S C E N C I A. And I am a current policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Leadership Council is a community based organization that works alongside some of the most impacted communities, including the communities of Fuller Acres, Lamont, Greenfield, Drexel Acres, Casa Loma, and Weed Patch. These are communities that are severely cost burdened and at risk of homelessness and displacement. Uh, these communities and the county depend heavily on having an adequate and comprehensive housing element that addresses fair housing issues and ensures adequate affordable housing options in the years to come. We urge the paneling commission to reject staff's recommendations and not approve a housing element draft that has not been deemed in compliance with HCD. The county risks dire consequences if they do not meet compliance soon. These consequences include losing land use authority, potentially losing out on millions of dollars of state funding, and much more. These consequences will harm disadvantaged communities and vulnerable communities the most. That is why we urge the county to work alongside leadership council and community residents to adjust efficiencies in the current housing element in order to reach state compliance. The county should not adopt or approve a housing element without knowing if it's in compliance with state law or not. In order to comply with state law, the county must reach compliance and adopt their housing elements within a hundred and twenty days of their deadline, which was, which expired on December thirty first, twenty twenty three, meaning that the, that currently the county has failed to adopt and approve their deadline in the allotted time period. Additionally, based on the most recent HCD findings, the county is still out of compliance with their six cycle housing element. We reiterate that the housing needs our residents face within the county on a daily basis include habitability, mold, broken appliances, illegal rental increases, landlord harassment, and illegal evictions. I did want to state very briefly as well, um, the, um, there is a lot of programs that , uh, Mr. Murphy did state that wouldn't be able to be included and they're in the hound out. And I would love to sit down with you all and explain why it wouldn't risk the county being sued. It would actually further AFFH and make sure that the county is in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward if you're interested in making a comment on this item. Okay, seeing no other movement. Come one, come all. All right, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the commission for questions, comments, or concerns.
Madam Chair, before your commission takes, um, comments, can, there's one thing I'd like to just clarify, um, before you consider, um, your actions this evening. So, um, staff specifically had communications with, um, HCD regarding this approach. HCD specifically said it's absolutely appropriate for your commission to consider, take action, move this forward to the board of supervisors while they're going through their additional sixty day review based on the second resubmit. I specifically add, said, is this something that I'm supposed to wait on? As, um, as Sandra had mentioned, uh, we are working to get this adopted as quickly as possible so that we remain in compliance with our housing element. Having a compliant housing element is extremely important to, um, all residents in the county. And so staff specifically was told by HCD that it's absolutely appropriate for your commission to take action on this, even though they're going through their second review and that, you know, we had committed that, you know, clearly the board of supervisors shouldn't take any action until we have some additional understanding as to HCD's second review of, um, our responses. But again, they were very clear in their conversation with me that your commission, it's absolutely appropriate, um, and that you are welcome to take any action, um, as well as you may have recommendations that we need to incorporate into the final proposed draft that would be presented in the board. So again, for those reasons, staff does believe that your commission, um, it's fully appropriate and, um, we welcome your comments regarding the housing element. And, um, it is our intent to move it to the board so that, um, final consideration again can be made in a timely manner so that we can begin working on these programs that we believe, um, would help, uh, implement and meet the needs of a number of residents, uh, within the unincorporated Kern County.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any members of the commission? Go for it.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you staff for your hard work. Mr. Murphy, thanks for your, uh, in-depth presentation. I think that for me, the most important thing is to maintain compliance. For me personally, hearing the feedback that you've gotten from HCD, that's, um, justification enough for me to, uh, to recommend the project for approval as, as it has been presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashley.
I'd second that.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? I have a few, um, questions and comments. First, I want to just highlight some of the proposed programs that were not recommended and support the county's decision on these. Uh, rental registry, they're currently in, in the homeless collaborative, there is a rental registry that we utilize for low income clients, um, through PAD mission. So I think the county could potentially just partner in providing, uh, that information to citizens once they establish their housing unit. Um, and then Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance does a great job of providing legal guidance and representation for a lot of the landlord and tenant dispute issues that we see across the county. My suggestion would be the county just support and/or provide, um, collaboration with Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance on, on these matters. Um, and then I did just want to say on, uh, program two point three, when it comes to, um, the housing unit sending out an invitation to stakeholders, um, for new builders, you know, one of the things that happens a lot is builders are interested and they have certain type of housing, um, elements in mind. And so one thing just to encourage the newly established housing unit to consider is the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative keeps a list of inflow categories of individuals that are entering into homelessness and are at risk of homelessness. Uh, we keep, um, you know, pretty extensive list on individuals that are facing these type of issues. And so just collaboration with the, um, Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative to assist in providing builders, you know, categories that might be supportive, um, and the type of inflow that could go into these rental units would be helpful. I did have a question on two point seven. Uh, Mr. Murphy, can you just provide a quick summary of what maybe the vision is for this expedited review application form?
Madam, uh, Madam Chair, uh, through the commission. So in general, any application that comes in, general plan amendment, zone change, conditional use permit, um, those types of applications that they're submitted either in person or they're mailed to us. You know, we have staff that gather those programs, those projects, they enter them into our database. We route them through so we can have appropriate maps prepared. Then we route them to an individual planner who then evaluates, prepares a preliminary review response to those comments, um, or to that application. You know, many times the application we receive, i- it's incomplete, it doesn't have all the information, you know, they have to be provided guidance as to what type of environmental analysis may or may not be required, are there studies that are required? Um, you know, there's a lot of factors in terms of providing information to a potential developer of any sort regarding a project. You know, that takes time. Once we provide that, when we get a response back, we have to review their resubmitted materials, did they get what we needed, is there anything outstanding? Again, all of that is just a process by which back and forth occurs. This program is designed, if we have a project where they're committed to including affordable housing, you know, and they would show us how they're doing that, um, through agreement or anything along those lines, we will work towards expediting those reviews. Jumps to the top of the list. Hey, we got to look at this one first. You know, it is very clear that the state of California has prioritized housing. And even though the county is not quite as equipped as cities and, you know, to be quite frank, most of the growth should occur in cities, um, the county is committed to helping to meet the needs and requirements of the state, um, towards all housing. And so the intent would be is projects that are proposing affordability, um, in which we have a link to make sure that they're tied to that affordability. We will, they get a jump to the front of the list in terms of our review, getting information out, things along those lines. Again, a lot of these programs, um, especially if they're not, um, driven by a, a for-profit developer, they're relying on trying to get basic information for grants and funding and things along those lines. Now again, it's hopeful that some of these programs won't be needed, they won't need the GPA or a zone change, but there are still other types of reviews that, that have to go through. You have to go through a building permit, you have to go through that aspect of it. So again, the county would be committed to establishing the process, internal process to really expedite the review, um, through all facets of the, um, planning and building process for these types of developments.
Okay, thank you. And then my last comment, skipping back quickly, is on item two point one. I just really want to, I thank the county for including this. I think this is a great element that is a long time coming. For individuals that are in the housing advocacy world, law is constantly changing, populations are constantly changing. And so I think dual dialogue both with those agencies and the county, uh, will be really beneficial. The individuals that are kind of working with clients, boots on the ground, uh, will be able to provide the county with a lot of feedback, uh, related to development needs. And I think that will be very beneficial. Um, so with those comments and that one question, um, I'm supportive of the project or the overall proposal, um, and sending it back to my colleagues for additional questions or a motion.
There are no further comments, I would, uh, move to approve, um, as read into the record and, um, clarified by Mr. Murphy.
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second, we'll vote on screen. Four yes, one absent, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're on to item three. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. We actually have our planner who is working on this project, Mr. Logan Clareday. He will be presenting this, um, project to you, um, for your consideration. So I present, uh, Mr. Clareday at this time.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The project proposal before you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow private swim lessons and instruction at a private residence. The applicant's name is Kevin Edgman. The project site is an approximate one point three five acre parcel located on the west side of Melon Court, approximately four hundred and fifty feet north of the intersection of Norris Road and Melon Court. The project site has a zone classification of estate residential suburban combining. Access to the project site is provided via Melon Court, a sixty foot wide public access easement that is privately maintained and provides access to the residents along Melon Court and is not maintained by the county. This road is comprised of asphalt with dirt shoulders. No curb, gutter, or sidewalk exists along the road. The project site is surrounded by a residential neighborhood with large lots with estate styled, single family dwellings and large residential accessory structures. As background, the project was approved under a home occupation permit issued by the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department on November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. However, was formally revoked on July twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, as the swim lessons were exceeding the intent of the home occupation permit. Therefore, a conditional use permit was required in order to provide appropriate evaluation of the proposed use. During the processing of this request, the applicant confirmed to staff that swimming lessons and operations are not currently taking place on site and are being conducted at an off-site location. The applicant has submitted an operational statement which details the following. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM with thirty two clients per day. The proposed swim lessons would be seasonal and lessons would begin May twenty seventh through August thirty first each year, and operations would not commence or end prior to these dates. The applicant has indicated that there is no minimum number of lessons a family must schedule. Each family may choose as many or as few lessons they wish to participate in. The applicant further indicates that returning and reoccurring families typically book lessons the same time each day if, if scheduled consecutively. The swim lessons are taught to children starting at age two, however, the age range fluctuates between families. The applicant has also indicated that they teach disabled children. No food or drinks will be paired on site. The applicant has stated that there are two restrooms with exterior entrances from the pools for clients to utilize. The applicant also states that the pool circulation system runs for ten hours daily and chemical levels are checked each morning prior to lessons beginning. On Sunday afternoons, prior to the upcoming week's schedule, the pool is shocked with granular chlorine. The applicant has submitted their safety certifications that include but are not limited to CPR and AED training, concussion awareness, sudden cardiac arrest, and heat illness prevention. The site plan shows that the clients will utilize an asphalt path which connects the project site to Melon Court and will lead clients to the applicant's backyard where they will park and enter through a backyard gate to the pool area. All parking will be contained on site and no on-street parking is being proposed. During the processing of this request, staff received comments from county departments and agencies as well as comments in support and opposition. A letter provided by the Kern County Public Health Department Environmental Health Division is recommending the applicant consult with the Consumer Protection Program to discuss the need for any pool permit. The comments received in opposition raised concerns in regard to the following. Increased traffic along Melon Court, increased noise from the proposed traffic along Melon Court, increased noise from the proposed project, safety concerns, dust from vehicles, and that the project violates the existing neighborhood's declaration of restrictions, or CCNRs. Through consultation with the Kern County Public Works Department, the project proposal required a trip generation analysis to be submitted in order to verify that the project would not lead to an increase in traffic along Melon Court. Through review of the trip generation, the Public Works Department determined that the impact of the increased usage of Melon Court is less than significant, therefore a traffic study or any other road improvement would not be required. There were specific concerns addressed about, there were specific concern expressed about the levels of noise from disabled children and lessons in general. The Kern County zoning ordinance defines ambient noise as, quote, "composite of noise from all sources excluding the alleged offensive noise." In this context, it represents the normal or existing level of environmental noise at a given location for a specified time of the day or night, Section 19.04.042, end quote. The ambient noise levels of a residential neighborhood are relatively quiet. Staff believes the use of a swimming pool and/or private one-on-one swim lessons does not exceed or generate noise that is not typical within residential areas. The applicant has not proposed the use of any voice or sound-altering equipment such as a bullhorn or microphone. The California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, includes qualitative guidelines for determining the significance of environmental noise impacts. A project will typically have a significant impact if it would expose people to or generate noise levels in excess of the established local general plan, noise ordinance, or applicable standards of other agencies; expose people to or generate noise excessive ground-borne vibration or ground-borne noise levels; result in a substantial permanent increase in ambient noise levels in the project vicinity above levels existing without the project; result in a substantial temporary or periodic increase in the ambient noise levels in the project vicinity above levels existing without the project; where projects within an area covered by an airport land use plan or within two miles of a public airport or public use airport when such an airport land use plan has not been adopted; or within the vicinity of a private airstrip, expose people residing or working in the project area to excessive aircraft noise levels; for a project within the vicinity of a private airstrip, expose people residing or working in the project area to excessive noise levels. The project site is zoned for a single-family home, and there is no limitation to the number of children who may live in such a home. Laughing, crying, and even screaming is a normal part of a child's expression and is expected to occur on this property or any property zoned for residential purposes. There is no limit or other standard in the Kern County zoning ordinance listing thresholds or limits for the noise that children make. The project proposal is limited to one child at a time and not groups of children, and there is no reasonable or feasible way to control those emotions expressed by a child. Additionally, denial of the project based on the characteristic behavior of an identified disabled population is a violation of state law. Staff believes that a child and an adult swimming in a swimming pool does not exceed the ambient noise levels of a residential neighborhood any more than a car or motorcycle traveling down a road within the same residential neighborhood does. However, staff has determined, should the project be approved, the use of any microphone, public addressing system, or any other noise-altering device would be strictly prohibited. Additionally, staff notes through review of aerial imagery, a majority of the homes located on Melon Court have swimming pools. And therefore, it can be seen that the potential noise generated from the project site is less than or equal to the existing ambient noise in the residential community. Lastly, in regard to the project proposal violating the existing community's declaration of restrictions, declarations of restrictions for residential communities are between the developer and the property owners. These declarations of restrictions are permitted so long as the restrictions do not permit or authorize a use that violates the Kern County zoning ordinance. Additionally, any conflict between neighbors alleging violation of the community's declarations is a private matter that has no purview within this land use application. With all of this in mind, staff is recommending the following conditions to address the concerns raised and compatibility of the project. Based on the information provided by the applicant and the comment letters received, staff has determined the following recommendations for your commission's consideration based on the evaluation of the project proposal. The swim lessons shall be limited to one-on-one private lessons and shall not exceed 20 lessons per day. There shall be a minimum of 10 minutes between lessons in order to alleviate any client overlap. The lessons shall be a minimum of 20 minutes. The hours of operation shall be Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., with the last lesson ending no later than 6:30 p.m. The conditional use permit will also be temporary for a minimum of three years between the dates of May 27th through August 31st, and the applicant may apply for permanent entitlement in 2026. The applicant will be required to submit proof that all personal safety certifications are up to date prior to the commencement of operations each year. The applicant will also be required to bring the swimming pool into compliance with the 2006 Pool and Spa Safety Act, as well as consulting with the Consumer Protection Program to ensure the proper safety features are included on-site prior to the commencement of lessons. Lastly, the applicant must maintain the asphalt in the parking and driveway area in order to eliminate any dust concerns. Staff believes these recommendations address the concerns raised. Additionally, staff has included specific recommendations for the private swim lessons to ensure that the project will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the public or to property and residents in the vicinity. Through evaluation of the proposed project, including the neighborhood concerns raised, staff is recommending a temporary approval of three years at this time. The reason for recommending a temporary use is to allow for the applicant to work through, to allow the applicant to work through the process and discern any problems or issues that may arise over the next three years. Conversely, this will also give neighbors the opportunity to evaluate how the applicant conducts the limited event activities and report back on any issues when and if the applicant applies for permanent entitlement after three years. After the three years have elapsed, the applicant will be required to submit a modification to the conditional use permit that would then allow staff to reassess the proposal to determine if the project is compatible with the area or the volume of visitors to the site. Because of this, staff believes a temporary conditional use permit of three years is appropriate. Tonight, your commission received an addendum that includes letters of support from the public in regard to site compatibility and personal testimony in regards to personal experience receiving, in regard to personal experience receiving swimming lessons and instruction from the applicant. Therefore, based on the submitted materials and evaluation, staff concludes the request sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the necessary findings and therefore recommends your commission adopt the findings and approve the conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation unless Assistant Director Murphy has any additional information to add.
Thank you, Mr. Clareday. So land use itself is an emotional topic, especially when we have requests involving residential homes and children, and this is an application that actually has both. So a lot of the comments received or that staff has seen on social media seem to put those who are in favor of providing swim lessons to children versus those who are not in favor of providing swim lessons to children. Clearly, that's not the case, and anybody who makes statements that those opposed to the project are desiring to have children drown or are being overly sensitive, those are completely inappropriate. I can only assume that those comments came from emotion and frustration of some sort. The issue before you this evening is one of land use and nothing more. Is this use, including how it is operated, consistent with the residentially designated neighborhood? And will it be material detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the public or the property and residents in the vicinity? The comments submitted in opposition express legitimate concerns that should be evaluated by staff and given your commission's full consideration. For example, and to put this in context, we have established limits on how many garage sales a residential house can have each year. Why do we do that? Well, because most people would be rather upset if a particular neighbor held such a yard sale every single weekend. That's akin to a retail swap meet versus a residential home. For those reasons, this particular project required the process of the conditional use permit so that the impacts could be properly evaluated and potential conditions could be presented to your commission. With that being said, the request before you is for individual swim lessons. They include a limited time each year, and they are located on a large 1.35 acre residential parcel along a public access easement that is privately maintained by the existing residential properties, which includes the residential proponent or the project proponent and his family. As for the stated, or as already stated in our recommendation, staff does believe that the request, as conditioned, is consistent with the typical uses and impacts that one would normally expect at a residential neighborhood or community. The average single-family home generates approximately 10 trips per day. This use would not generate any more annual trips than if an additional home was added to the neighborhood. Further, the operational impacts would not generate any peak hour congestion that would result in impacts to the adjacent residential properties. With the proposed requirements that all the parking must occur on-site and out of the public access easement and on a paved-drive approach, along with the fact that the types of expected trips generated would be from standard passenger cars in which the asphalt was designed to accommodate, and Condition 2E, which establishes a minimum time between the various students that would be utilizing the services, staff believes that the requested private swim lessons would have negligible impacts regarding traffic and roadway impacts. Again, as Mr. Clareday stated, comments were received regarding the compatibility with established CCNRs. Enforcement of CCDRs are civil matters. County cannot legally impose on this particular project. A detailed review of CCRs are not reviewed or signed off on by the county when they're established. Those are done by the developer and generally are part of a residential tract. Regarding safety, staff have, or what we have here is an experienced professional conducting lessons that have included what we, and we have included what we believe appropriate conditions of approval to address the overall safety concerns while conducting private swim lessons out of a residential property without any lifeguard on duty. Again, for all those reasons, staff is in support of the request as conditioned, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you, staff, for your information. We're going to open this up to public comment unless any commissioners have any quick questions. Seeing none, we're going to open this up to public comment. So if you're interested in making a public comment, please come towards the microphone. You'll have two minutes. Again, the timer is behind me, so please be mindful. I will give you a 10-second warning and we'll kind of see where you're at in your comments. Please state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. It would be appropriate to have the applicant go first before we open it up for everybody else.
Thank you. My apologies. Is the applicant here and interested in making a comment? Mr. Edgman, please come forward.
I'm Ray Cook.
Sir, hold on one quick second. Will you do mind taking a seat? We're going to let, we need to let the applicant comment first. My apologies. I did it out of order.
Good evening. Pardon me. Hello, my name is Kevin Edgman. I live at 6707 Melon Court, and I'm applying for the conditional use permit number 46 MAP 102-09 to give private swim lessons at my residence. Planning Commission, I want to thank you for your time and attention to what many would consider a very simple matter. However, this process has been anything but simple. I want to thank Mr. Logan Clareday for his efforts and professionalism as I navigated this problem, I'm sorry, process, pardon me. Thank you to both Mr. Craig Murphy and Kathy Barker for their dedication and reliability as I dealt with this swimming lesson matter. A little history is my wife and I purchased our home at 6707 Melon Court in 2019. From my father-in-law, Mr. John Bryan, in 2021, I began giving private one-on-one swimming lessons. I have been providing swimming lessons since 1988. In 1989, at age 18, I was hired as the Wasco Recreation Department Head Swimming Coach. In my 25 years of coaching competitive swimming, I've been a head coach of Shafto Recreation Swim Team, Real Bravo Greeley Swim Team, Shafto High and Liberty High Swimming and Diving. It is my estimation that I have worked with approximately 10,000 children at this point in my career. I have never experienced this type of backlash as a result of my lessons or the manner in which I conduct myself. My family has been a part of the local swimming community since the early 1970s. My father, Ed Edgman, architect the RBG Swim Team, it in its peak totaling over 300 seasonal participants. Currently, my sister Cory Corrales heads up that program and continues to foster strong ties of water safety and competitive swimming within Kern County. My roots run deep in the swimming community in Kern County, and my commitment to children's water and pool safety is unmatched. I have worked at three other of my prior residents giving private swim lessons and have never had an issue like the one I have experienced leading up to and culminating with this application for a conditional use permit. During the school year, I teach Vista High School as a campus, as an on-campus intervention instructor. Prior to transitioning to on-campus intervention, I spent 20 years as a special education instructor, and I spent five years as a physical education instructor. During that time, I studied how juveniles learn, how children react when they are unsure of themselves or afraid to try, how fear often drives our children's decisions-making, and how to recognize those traits when a child is learning to swim and reduce his or her fear to a level that allows skills to develop. In essence, I have discovered that no, or, I'm sorry, that no development takes place if fear is, if fear is present. The fear significantly reduces the amount of skill that children has the ability to access through instruction. My central goal when beginning a lesson and a new relationship with a student is to immediately reduce the child's fear, reassure them that he or she is safe, and that I will not let anything happen to them. We are a team, and I will take care of them. As you have read in the document the staff provided, the swimming lesson issue began in the summer of '21 when I was cited for operating a business without a permit. I didn't realize I needed a permit, but it was a new home and the rules may be different, so I applied and received the home occupation permit in November of '21. During that off-season, I installed a street sign, Brian Drive, to notify my clients where to turn left onto our property and therefore eliminate the opportunity of one of my clients making an error in coming to lessons. I also developed a letter to give to each of my clients outlining the restriction that I created to stay in good graces with my neighbors regarding my swimming lessons. It reads, "As you turn onto Norris Road onto Melon Court, please remember that the speed limit is 15 miles an hour. All lessons will be held at 6707 Melon Court, west side of the street. Turn left at Brian Drive and proceed through the metal gate and park in the back of the property. Please do not park in front of the house. Unfortunately, to comply with my working-from-home permit, only one vehicle per student will be allowed this summer to park in the back portion of the property. All other vehicles will need to park on Norris Road and walk in or ride. I know this may be a small inconvenience, however, to stay compliant with my agreement with the County of Kern, I must adhere to this stipulation." So in June of '22, I began another full, another year of swimming lessons. However, by July of '22, I received another letter from Code Compliance stating that I was again out of compliance due to the fact that I was operating a business without a permit. I knew this was an error because I had obtained my home occupation permit the previous November. So clearly, my neighbors were simply unaware that I had followed through and secured the proper permit. On Saturday, July 23rd, I went to notify my neighbors of my recently obtained permit in an effort to put their minds at ease. I attempted to speak to Mrs. Gay first when I knocked on her door. Unfortunately, there was no answer. I then attempted to speak to Mrs. Gay, but unfortunately, again, there was no answer. I was, however, able to speak to Mr. and Mrs. Ferrier during our conversation, which was brief because they had to prepare for an evening of Bible study, they said. I shared with the two of them that I did have a permit, and I was doing everything I think, I could think of to reduce the influence of my swimming lessons. At that time, they both shared with me how much quieter it had been that summer and that cars were no longer pulling into their driveway and down towards their home in an effort to find mine any longer. They appreciated my efforts, and I appreciated their feedback, and we parted wice. and I appreciated their feedback, and we parted ways. At that time, as I was returning to my home, I saw Mrs. Gay working in her front yard, so I approached her to notify her that I did, in fact, have a permit to operate swimming lessons. Our conversation was very eye-opening to me. The things that, at that time, that concerned Mrs. Gay were the traffic, the number of cars that came up and down the floor, I'm sorry, up and down the road, the wear and tear of the asphalt. But the most alarming issue that she had was the fact that she shared with me that her home had been broken into approximately six months earlier, that they'd had a huge amount of goods stolen, and that how could she be sure of the quality of my clientele that came to swimming lessons? How could she be sure that they weren't casing her house? At that time, I tried to assure her, "These people are only coming for swimming lessons. They just want their children to be safe. They don't have any interest in your house or my house or anybody else's house on this street. They're simply coming for swimming lessons." As we discussed these issues, it became clear to me, clear to me I was speaking with a person that was unable or unwilling to see the situation through a realistic lens. On July of '22, my home occupation permit was revoked, and I began a two-year process, thousands of dollars later, to obtain a conditional use permit to continue my swimming and water safety lessons at my home. The three individuals that have expressed the greatest opposition to me receiving this permit are Mrs. Ferrier and her children, Mrs. Gay and Mrs. Knight. And I must state for the record that at no time have any of these individuals approached me directly to speak to me about my swimming lessons, whether they have stood in the shadows of the Code Compliance Department of the county trying to get the County of Kern to make me stop giving these life-saving lessons. I've read the complaints. There are beliefs why I should not be able to host private one-on-swim lessons, swimming lessons at my home. As I read through the complaints, I quickly discovered, discovered some half-truths, some things that are grossly exaggerated, some things that were fabricated, and some things that were simply omitted. Mrs. Ferrier reported things that have simply never happened or happened in the summer of '21 prior to the street sign. That remedied the problem. To Mrs. Ferrier and the other members of the, of the street that are concerned about my, the asphalt, the truth is, the cars moving up and down the asphalt are good for the asphalt, according to Jeff White, owner and operator of Asphalt Doctor. He explained it to me as, "If you look at a church parking lot, it only gets used once a week. And because it only gets used once a week, church parking lots have a tendency to break down rather fast compared to streets. Streets get used throughout the day, and because of the heat of the day and the, and the asphalt constantly being compacted, it actually increases the life of the asphalt." Furthermore, I can't fathom the thought of having over an acre of property and actively encourage my children to play in the street. I have seen the Ferrier's driveway and drive-through. If it isn't enough room for your children, then there simply isn't enough room. Regarding you sending your children to be taught by me, first of all, I would love to work with your children. I'm sure I could get them to improve their current level of proficiency in the water in just a few lessons. You might want to come see one of my lessons firsthand rather than comment on something that you've never witnessed personally. But you're always invited to come see firsthand what I do if you'd like. My work hours have been outlined. Unfortunately, the quote of, "Lessons start at 7:00 or 8:00 a.m., and it continues until he knocks off for the night." I promise you, I don't work that hard. There's no way that I start at 7:00 a.m. and I go till 7:00 p.m. I'm a hard worker, but I don't work 12 hours a day. As I read Mrs. Gay's account for swimming, our swimming lesson disagreement, I noticed that she failed to mention a couple of items. One, prior to her letter she references in the complaint to Mr. Craig Murphy, Mrs. Gay fails to mention that she and another neighbor stopped and questioned families that were receiving swimming lessons from me. She harassed at least three of my clients, two of which have submitted letters that should be found in the addendum. Please reference Mrs. Barreras and Mrs. Mesa's letter. Mrs. Gay states the following, "I consider myself a master gardener, and I am outside most days, working in the yard regardless of the weather." Maybe Mrs. Gay isn't aware that we have a commonality. I too have a master's, but my master's in special education, and it isn't self-appointed. I have a bachelor's of science in kinesiology, not to mention a lifetime of experience. I am too a master. I'm a master of giving swimming lessons. I teach children with autism as well as children with varying degrees of cognitive or physical disabilities. And since my background in special education with a master's degree, it appears that these individuals are attempting to limit swimming lessons for children with disabilities based upon the noise that that child makes. That is, like Mr. Claride said, against state law. Lastly, no one has forced Mrs. Gay to do anything. She has chosen to get attorney, an attorney on her own accord, and that is her decision. No one has forced her to decide to do that. Lastly, the complaint of Mrs. Knight has submitted is unfortunate. She references a comment made by me on social media regarding the term Karens. Mrs. Knight unfortunately self-identified with this, with this term. Self-identity is the identity that one gives oneself. In my video, I don't mention names, but both Mrs. Gay and Mrs. Knight self-identified that I was referring to them. That is an issue for them, not for me. Mrs. Go, Mrs. Knight goes on to state, "You can't move into an established 40-year-plus-old neighborhood and change the dynamic to suit yourself." I am not sure if Mrs. Knight is aware, but there is no place on this earth that maintains the same dynamic it had 40-plus years ago. Things change, people progress. It's okay. There's nothing to be afraid of. But based upon all the documentation that was generated, I'm very concerned about the fact that what I do on social media is such an interest to these people. However, if I am granted the conditional use permit, I've already made some plans to purchase a sandwich board, notifying families where to turn in case they miss the street sign. In addition, I'm having a camera installed above the pool that allows friends and families to watch lessons remotely. I believe this will be another tool to reduce traffic. In closing, families of these children simply want to have peace of mind that if something accidental or unexpected happens to their child while swimming, the child can save his or her own life if it comes to that. Parents know that drowning is the leading cause of death among children ages 1 to 4 years old. And those families never want to have to experience that type of loss, especially when it is highly preventable. The statistics are even more staggering if the child has a diagnosis of autism spectrum disorder. According to a 2017 study, children with ADS are 160 times more likely to drown than their general pediatric population. Furthermore, the National Autism Association reports that 91% of all accidental deaths of children with ASD under the age of 14 are caused due to drowning. Both of these statistics are beyond frightening and avoidable with appropriate instruction. I've been able to provide private one-on-one instruction for children with autism since '21, and having lessons at my home would allow me more time within the workday to provide these drastically-needed instructions for such a grossly underserved community. Coupled with the fact that I am now partnered with Kern Autism Network, I am expecting my opportunity to serve the autistic community to only increase. I welcome any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Edgman. If you take a seat, once we end public comment, we might ask you back up. Okay, now we are opening public comment. So again, two minutes for public comment. Timer will be behind us. I will give you a 10-second warning. We'll hopefully have you wrap up your comments at that time. Please state your name for the record and spell your last name.
My name is Brittany Neal, and that's spelled N-E-A-L. I would like to voice my support for this conditional use permit. My daughter has received swim lessons from Mr. Edgman since 2021. We had attended another group swim lesson with another teacher whose approach was to ignore a child's natural reluctance to this scary new task we are asking of them and to just push through no matter their protests. This environment led my daughter to not being able to gain any of the life-saving skill, life-saving skills she so desperately needed as we have a pool in our home. The following summer, we found Mr. Edgman, and the environment and instruction he provided could not have been more different. His background in special education is immediately apparent as he works with the kids, acknowledging their fears and assuring that they understand that they are safe. Any tears that are initially present are quickly calmed with this approach. The environment that is provided by his home and his pool is safe, and so the child can focus on attaining the skills that they need to learn. Now, at six years old, my daughter is a strong and confident swimmer, which provides a lot of peace of mind to me as her parent. Kevin has provided a critical service to the children of Kern County who cannot learn water safety skills in a public pool or a group environment. Allowing him to continue to provide these lessons in his home will allow him to provide this benefit to as many children as possible. And I ask that you allow him to continue providing these lessons in its most beneficial form, which will be in his home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I'm Ray Cook. I live at 7300 Norris Road, corner of Norris and Patton. Not very far from where they're wanting to put this pool in, make it a commercial setting. I've lived there for many years. I bought that house back in 90, back in '89 when I moved into with my wife and all. I want to keep it as a residential area, not as a commercial. And that's what they've gone. They want you to put our area in a commercial setting. We don't want it. We want to stay here. Because if you do let it go in, you're going to find more signs put on the streets of people that own businesses in that area that's been kept their mouths shut all these years because you, as a board, said we couldn't put a sign up. Well, let's keep it that way. Don't turn around and cut at their throats and stab us in the back after you told us we couldn't do it. Now he won't put up and park on Norris Road. How does he know all them people are going to come to his swimming pool that works out there? He can't guarantee it. So it's up to you to set an example today whether you're going to make our area a commercial or keep it residential. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Ashley Bell, B-E-L-L. I come before you today as a mother of five. In 2024, where our biggest complaint is kids are not kids, people don't want to make an honest living, and parents are too busy to be with their kids. Here we have a man trying to make an honest living, teaching children life-saving skills. Do you know that some of the most special time talking to your kids is in a car driving? So the fact is, drowning is the number-one cause of death. Coming from a mother who has lost a child at 11 years old, there is nothing more valuable than a child's life, not a private road, not a property, not noise, not a business license, not time or money. Emotional or not, none of those things will bring back a child. I was referred to Kevin for swim lessons by a friend whose child had done private lessons somewhere else and was not getting any benefit. In two weeks, her son, her daughter, was swimming. So I contacted Kevin, and I'm a little reluctant in the beginning because there was strict rules about what time you were allowed to arrive, where you were able to park, how to get there, et cetera. I go to swim lessons, and in two weeks, my child, who is two years old and unfortunately not terrified of water at all, is swimming independently. I have not needed swim lessons for my children for years. However, I still recommend him to people. I also live close to the property and drive by multiple times a day as a mother of five. You cannot tell a difference in travel on that road at any time of day. So I ask you again, what's more important than a child's life? And the answer is nothing. So I hope that we can allow him to continue lessons at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Just a reminder, sorry, real quick, just a reminder for the audience to keep respect for every speaker and keep your comments to yourselves when you, when somebody else is speaking. Please proceed.
My name is Yolanda Gay, and I live at 6706 Melon Court. I was only going to address the road, but I would like to state that in listening to Mr. Edgman, there was a lot of half-truths, and I've never spoken to any of his clients, ever. And he said that I've spoken to a couple of them. What I would like to address is it lets you know that our road is very unique. It's not a, we do not have an HOA, but we own to the center of the road. Every property line is to the center, which makes it unique in the fact that we don't collect dues. So when the road has to be repaired, we have to, it has to come out of our pocket. A few years before Mr. Edgman moved in, we resurfaced the road for $40,000, and that all had to come out of nine individual household, all at once. Then last year, some of the homeowners noticed that we were getting cracks in the road. We were told that we needed to maintain the road. We needed to oil it every five to six years. So I approached everybody. I called several places. Only two came out and gave me estimates. And in those estimates, I presented them, and Mr. Edgman was the only one that objected. He wanted three bids. He said, "Give him 30 days, and he would get three bids." That was a year ago. We still haven't had the real oil, and he's never presented any bids at all. In conclusion, I would like to state that per Civil Code 845, everyone on that road has to share everything equally. So if there's more traffic going to one house, it doesn't matter. We all have to share, we all have to share the same. And the person that put the road in was Mr. Scott Sheldon, and he said that the road was not designed. It's not a county road. It's not the same thickness, and it's not the same consistency of the asphalt or the oil that's used in the asphalt. Did I say something funny? I'm sorry.
No, I didn't want to interrupt you before the time was over. So please proceed if you're.
No, I'm done. But I do have some pictures of the road and some of the conditions of the road now because of not being oiled.
You can provide that to the clerk if you're, if you want to. Just pass it up, and she can grab those for you. Next speaker?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Ferrier, and I live on Maryland, Melon Court. F-E-R-R-I-E-R. My concern today is the safety of the children on our road. I'm not anti-swim safety. All my kids have had swim lessons. Our road, though, is not a wide street with sidewalks and bike lanes and places for cars and people to coexist safely. We have three families with small children living along our road. We also have several sets of grandparents. The kids ride their bikes and scooters on the road, which is a lot more fun than in your backyard, by the way, mister. Moms push their babies in strollers, and elderly people walk on the road. There are no sidewalks. The sides of the road are dirt, sloped in places, and often filled with sticker weeds and goat heads. Residents who live along the road know to watch out and drive slowly. This is our road. We live here, and we pay for it. The county does not maintain one inch of this road. We paid. When swim lessons started in 2022, the traffic was a nightmare. According to the Edgman Swim website, lessons are 15 minutes long. Lessons are five days a week, eight hours a day. That means that along our narrow road, we had up to 48 extra car trips every day. My kids had to stop riding their bikes on the road. My kids and my fence were nearly hit by a woman looking at her phone while driving on our property. I was teaching my 15-year-old daughter how to drive on our road after she got her permit, and she was tailgated and honked at on our road by people coming for lessons. If swim lessons are approved as requested, that's 64 car trips a day and 320 car trips on our road per week during the summer when kids are out of school and should be playing. There's a big difference between someone babysitting their grandkids after school and someone running a daycare full-time in their home. There's a difference between dog sitting for a friend and running a kennel. And there's a big difference between teaching a few swim lessons in your backyard and running a steady stream of clients through your yard in a swimming lesson assembly line every 15 minutes. According to 23 News, 21 children were killed by accidental drowning in Kern County between 2018 and 2022. But in the same time period, 181 pedestrians were killed by distracted or careless drivers in Bakersfield City alone. I am not against swim safety. I do believe that pedestrian safety of the people who live on the road should be considered. If the county approves the permit for this high-traffic business on our quiet street, they are setting us up for serious safety hazards on our own private property. I ask that you please deny this permit.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name's April Anderson. I am the power of attorney for Mrs. Casanova, who resides at 7600 Norris Road. Mrs. Casanova has resided in the Melon Court neighborhood since 1978. She wants everyone to know that it is one of the most beautiful and serene neighborhoods in Kern County, and it is absolutely picturesque. She feels strongly that Melon Court's beauty is a direct result of the CCNRs that are in place and the fact that the road is privately owned. She believes that Mr. Edgman was well aware of these CCNRs when he purchased his home as he purchased it from his father-in-law, who followed the CCNRs and ensured that all the neighbors followed the CCNRs as well. When Mr. Edgman ran swim lessons for a period of time, I think around '21, Mrs. Casanova said she noticed an increased traffic pattern on Melon Court. She counted up to 40 cars, and with the cars often speeding to make it on time to get to their children's 15-minute swim lesson. She also noticed there was excessive yelling from what she described as a megaphone. She said it was so loud she could no longer drink coffee on her back porch, and she couldn't open her back windows. Mrs. Casanova believes that allowing this conditional use permit and violating the well-established CCNRs, the county will be opening the door to future business ventures in the neighborhood that could take away from the serenity and the peacefulness it has always offered. Now, Mr. Edgman has never approached Mrs. Casanova regarding his business or offering solutions to this matter as he previously stated in the 23 News segment. Instead, he has villainized her, along with all the other neighborhoods, by providing a false narrative and calling them, quote, "pro-drowning." He continues to rally sympathy by posting misleading and disparaging rhetoric in his efforts to get his way. Meanwhile, he's besmirched his neighbors, which includes a 91-year-old woman whom he has never even met. Mrs. Casanova is deeply troubled by this. As she's not pro-drowning, she lost her brother to drowning and continues to be traumatized by that. She believes teaching children swimming is imperative, but she believes that Mr. Edgman has more options other than teaching from his home. To wrap it up, Ms. Casanova would like to reiterate that the homeowners are the ones who must pay for the roadwork and maintenance on Melon Court, not the county, and the county refused to assume this years ago. The road is not engineered for the traffic patterns of any type of business, and the last time that the road was addressed was prior to when Mr. Edgman moved into the neighborhood. She's confident that he is a great swim instructor, but she can't afford to pay his cost of doing business, and she's concerned that the road will deteriorate more rapidly and that resurfacing will be required sooner. She's on a fixed income, so this would be detrimental to her welfare should this get approved. Please do not allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? If you're interested in speaking, please come forward to the front seats if you can.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Alexis Schaffield, S-H-E-F-F-I-E-L-D. I'm delivering this comment in support of approving Kevin's permit. I met Coach Kevin when I started swimming for the Rio Bravo Greeley Swim Team in 2008. During that time, I gained confidence as a swimmer and swam throughout my high school career as well, so it was a very positive impact. Our relationship transitioned from coach and athlete to boss and employee. Kevin was my boss at Rio Bravo Greeley Swim Team, and this is when I also started viewing Kevin as a mentor. He not only taught me how to teach others to swim, but he also taught me skills like integrity, group management, how to be professional, and how to treat others well. As I continue my own journey as a swim coach at Rio Bravo Greeley Swim Team this summer, Kevin continues to mentor me and has been selfless in giving time and energy so that I may also make a positive impact in teaching water safety to children in our community. I trust in Kevin's willingness to do everything he can to continue to comply with and exceed the county's requirements for a conditional use permit. Kevin is providing a vital service to local children. I want to echo that Kevin's services exist for the many children who need to learn how to swim and who do not find public group swim lessons accessible. Kevin's partnership with the Kern Autism Network should speak volumes to this board as it shows Kevin's commitment to water safety for children. Please consider heavily if the county is willing to limit services to the already underrepresented community of autistic children. The neighbors have legitimate concerns, and I know Kevin will do his best to mitigate those concerns. Before you vote, please weigh the support behind Kevin. 30-plus years of children who have learned to swim, 30-plus years of athletes inspired to do their best, and 30-plus years of Kern County families who are able to enjoy swimming safely. I urge an approval today of Kevin's conditional use permit. Thank you for listening to my comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Jessica Barr-Ross, B-A-R-R-R-O-S-S. I reside at 9308 Eckhart Road. I come to you as a mother of six, who, as soon as my children can learn to walk, we made sure they learned to swim. I was fortunate to know someone already who could teach one-on-one swimming lessons because when you're teaching small children in a large group, they don't learn like that. And I was fortunate that all six of my children learned the life-saving skills of how to swim when they were two. I saw the results when my two-year-old son fell into the pool at a party and was able to roll over and hold his position until somebody could get there, out of the pool. My children learned how to swim at a young age because I come to you also as someone who has lost a child to a drowning accident. And I don't wish that on anyone. My sister's son, through so many things that you never think would happen, happened. My father left the gate down by accident. She came home from a long day of working, laid down to take a nap with him, not knowing that was going to be the last time she held her son. Losing a child that young is something I don't wish on anyone because it was a guilt that my father left had to live with for the rest of his life and a guilt that my sister lived with for the rest of her life because of things that could have been prevented. The swimming skills that Mr. Edgman provide are so imperative for children. When I had another nephew a few years ago before I knew of Mr. Edgman, I couldn't find a one-on-one swim instructor, so we tried group, and it didn't work. One-on-one swim instructions, it's not the same. I just hope you take that in consideration of the service that he's providing to these children.
Thank you. Next speaker? Again, if you're interested in speaking, please come forward to the front seats.
My name is Chris Knight, K-N-I-G-H-T. I live at 6701 Melon Court. And really, from the time Mr. Edgman, we didn't realize he had bought the property. His father-in-law still spoke as though he owned the property. And first, my property was flooded because the pool was drained. And I thought, well, why is John draining it onto my property? So he moved it to the pasture. Then I see people out in my cypress trees in the front cleaning paintbrushes. Go paint, who, there and clean them in their bushes. Don't kill my 40-year-old cypress trees. So it went on, and we thought it was odd when they jackhammered the corner of the house to put their outdoor restrooms. They reeded the pool, and you're thinking, boy, you've got the country goose in the kitchen and 40-year-old appliances, and you're doing all this out here, but, you know, you still aren't expecting what became of it. So in '21, when it started, it did sound like a mega horn or whatever you call the megaphone. It was very loud. And as far as one-on-one, that is not true either. The other, if Mr. Edgman would have come to any of us and said, I'm buying John's property. This is, I know these are expensive properties, and I'm going to teach swim lessons. Would that be okay? It'll just be one-on-one. I won't create a problem. All of us would have probably said, yeah, yeah, go ahead. But that isn't how it was. It became three or four cars flying in and three or four flying out all day. The noise, a baby screaming till I went in the house. It was so loud, and I have block walls around my fence. I have some pictures here. On 7/12/22, at 5:02, there's three cars parked, three kids getting swim lessons at a time, maybe more. At 5:43 on 7/12/22, there's two. On 7/25/22, at 5:36 PM, there's three. It isn't one-on-one. And we are the ones paying for everything. We've seen, I'm not a Facebook person, but people have said, you need to see this. So I've seen the horrible remarks the people have called us. One lady, I guess I can't say their names, said, again, there's a special place in hell for those people, us neighbors. There's nine on our private street. Eight have submitted letters that are against it. He obviously has a huge following. But what about us? We've been there. This is our private community. When we open the door for him to have a business, all of our backyards could be events. You could have those evening, the events places. So is that what it becomes, a commercial street? We all have room for off-street parking, but you've opened the door. You are opening the door to more. And in all of his comments, one person, only one person, and I know you guys have seen these, said, his name's Michael Williams, some things just don't make any sense. Is it an HOA committee or city? And what is their complaint? Mr. Edgman didn't answer that question. What he said is, it's the county, and it's the neighbors, two of them. The complaint is traffic. One car every 15 to 30 minutes. And noise, me and one student? At this point, these people are pro-drowning if they are anti-pool safety lessons. Well, I'm going to tell you, like the lady that just spoke, I experienced a drowning of a 23-month-old, and it was so buried in me when I saw that. He brought it all out. My girls learned to float in the bathtub, then in the pools. My daughter was waterskiing at two years old. I was never going to, and like that lady said, it was a series of errors. Nobody wants a child to drown. All children should have swim lessons. But we have been a private community for 45 years, since 1978, and we've all fought to keep it private. Our children learn to ride their bicycles and scooters, and they learn to drive on our street. There's no traffic. But when you have those cars, it's a nightmare. And when you do the math, I know I'm getting close. I'm overtime. But when you do the math, every 15 minutes, it's $4,800 a week. And when he does three or four, you do the math on that and see what he's making a week. It's about money. Our water bills exceed $1,000 a month. So, and if he's put a lot of money into the property, well, that's good for him. But you also have to be able to afford it without infringing on your neighbors. Why do we suffer? Because he's overspent. That's really what it comes down to. We want every child to learn to swim. But if you do it, you figure four children every 15 minutes, that's $19,200 a week income. That's pretty good. That's more than most people make in a month. So anyway, do you want the pictures of all the cars parked back there?
You're welcome to provide them to the clerk.
And I'd also talked to Jason Smith because I said, his fence is falling down. Jason told me you didn't need a fence to teach swim lessons. I was like, whoa. I had to put a fence up to have a pool, and it is still falling down. It is, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Hi, my name's Danielle Ochoa, O-C-H-O-A. I just want to speak on my experience with Kevin Edgman. I started swimming under Kevin's instruction at age six, and now my four-year-old daughter, Olivia, is learning from that same instruction. And I just would really implore neighbors to really get to know Kevin Edgman. What I'm listening to, I know his character, and I'm a little saddened that people haven't taken the time to really get to know him and what he really stands for. I urge the approval of this CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I'm sorry about taking so long getting up here. My name is Mark Day. I'm Yolanda's husband, and we live on Melon Court. I take, I'm reading with Mr. Edgman's characterization of my wife and these other ladies because he doesn't know them at all. My wife spent 23 years at the Sheriff's Department, and the last seven were working in crimes against people, mainly crimes against children. She did that for seven years before she retired. So he has no idea what these women do. And my wife has also been involved in special Olympics. She raised money. She's done events for them. So it, I'm sorry, but I'm just upset with somebody mischaracterizing other people. And lastly, I want to say is, our family, my family, developed that land. We developed that 20 acres, and it was never designed for any type of commercial use at all. And in fact, we have been to court twice on people that want a new commercial businesses on that property. One's right on Norris Road, and the other one is where the Ferriers live now. So I've been, I have lived on that property for, what, almost 50 years? And we don't run businesses out of there. It's a quiet neighborhood. People come into it because it is quiet. And we got a brand-new family that moved in a year ago that has a new child now. family that moved in a year ago that has a new child now. So they'll be up there playing in the street in a couple of years. We have another special needs child right across from those folks. So Mr. Edgeman doesn't know what he's talking about. All of us are involved with children. My kids have learned how to swim. My grandkids have learned how to swim. And my great-granddaughters are now taking swimming lessons. So I better shut up. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name's Justice Lopez, L-O-P-E-Z. My son is four years old. He started swim lessons with Kevin at 18 months old. He has autism. And within two weeks of swimming with Kevin, he learned how to swim. He learned how to swim before he could talk. And if that doesn't speak volumes to everyone in this room, I don't know what is going to. To me, I don't know what is more important than a child's life. And I urge all of you to please approve this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, my name is Valentin Peña, P-E-N-A. I would hope that you guys could vote for Mr. Edgeman. I know there's a lot of concerns. I know this young lady had pictures of cars, multiple cars and multiple children in the pool. My son is actually a participant right now. And I can vouch that it is really one-on-one. She might pull photos saying, hey, there's more kids and there's more cars. I understand that sometimes. For example, in my instance, my wife may go and drop off my son. In that time, in those 15 minutes, we might overlap each other because she'll tell me, hey, you need to go pick him up. So I'll be picking him up. So yeah, in this instance, there is sometimes two or three cars, but it is still one-on-one. My wife leaves, then I'll leave. I know as I'm leaving, sometimes there's another car pulling up. But I can vouch for myself saying, like, I don't want to call her a liar, but I do know that there is one-on-one instructions. And I know that personally because my son is in the pool, one-on-one, Monday through Friday for 15 minutes. So I would hope that you guys can consider in favor of Mr. Edgeman.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name's David D'Osie. I live at 6712 Melon Court. I've been there since 1980. I'm sure Mr. Edgeman, you know, provides a really valuable service, but Kern Autism Network, of which we were early members, I noticed they contract with a number of providers over the years. My son, 34-years-old, diagnosed at age three with autism, he was taught to swim at Kern Arth- Kern Arthritis Center. And so there are other, there are other places. Mr. Edgeman apparently has done this at other houses. And I'm wondering why he chose to do it at the present residence, knowing that the CCNRs disallow any, any commercial business on that property. As far as the, as far as the road, I'm not, not sure. But I think it opens up a precedent because I've already been approached by an individual that would like to rent some of my acreage to store his outsized nursery plans and claims it wouldn't be much traffic. And I'm told by, I said, I don't think, I don't think any of the residents on this street would approve that. So that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. Neil Ferrier, F-E-R-R-I-E-R, and I live at 6711 Melon Court. And I respectfully ask that you deny this permit number 46. You've already heard, it's a private road owned and managed by the nine owners. We're a unique neighborhood. We're off of a main busy street. We have a private road. It's a quiet neighborhood, a great place to raise our families. You've already heard the responsibility for the cost to maintain this road is with the owners. And I have some pictures that I would like to provide as well, showing the degradation and deterioration already on the road. The number of cars coming in is only going to increase that and cause that to happen more quickly. Look, the road's not designed for heavy traffic. It never was designed for that. There's no bike lane, there's no sidewalks. And I do take umbrage with some comments earlier from Mr. Edgeman suggesting that my kids should be locked into my yard only because I happen to have a yard. Doesn't make sense to me. Per the 15-minute timeframe and the number of cars, I mean, we're talking hundreds of cars a week for 12, 15 weeks during the summer. That is a huge increase of traffic on our road. I know, we live there. We notice the traffic. Okay? During 2022 and his lessons, we witnessed many distracted parents, often driving faster than the posted speed limit of 15 miles an hour, often distracted by handheld devices. They often missed their turn, went all the way down to the end of the street, had to turn around, come back, which causes them to go off the road because they're driving onto the shoulders and into the dirt parts when they're turning around. So how long before we have a traffic incident on this because of the increased traffic? Look, we're discussing the wrong problem. No one is debating the value and importance of swim lessons. Certainly none of the folks you heard against this permit. No one is stopping Mr. Edgeman from teaching his lessons and finding a suitable venue to do so. In fact, he's doing it now successfully. But with our quiet residential neighborhood, the opening of this business against our CCNRs, it's going to create an unacceptable hazard and conditions and the costs that the neighbors have to own. So I strongly urge you to please deny this permit request. Thank you. And I do have a couple of pictures.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Adriana Garcia, G-A-R-C-I-A. I'm here in support of Kevin today. My son, a few years ago, got swimming lessons with Kevin at age four. I want to say I scheduled probably about a week of swim lessons and Adam learned to swim on day three after just three sessions. I just kind of want to tell you about my experience. When we did go to lessons, it was one-on-one. It was, I'm, I'm kind of confused with the noise complaints because it was actually the most peaceful thing. As a mother, I really enjoyed sitting in that chair and it was very peaceful. The only noise you could hear was just water splashing and Kevin's voice. It was extremely calming for my son. And it was actually relaxing for me as a mom to sit down under an umbrella. As I drove in the neighborhood, of course, getting Kevin's instructions, they were easy to follow. Anytime you're driving into a neighborhood, I'm a mom, you know, you automatically slow down. I also didn't notice any children playing in the street. And that's probably because it's Bakerfield in the middle of the day in the summer. I understand your concerns with kids playing in the street because I am fortunate to live on a street that's kind of private, where my kids can go outside and play too. But during the summer, my kids and the neighborhood kids aren't playing until it's almost right before sundown because it's too hot. So I just want to say our experience is peaceful, it's quiet. And I have a toddler that I have to send to his dad's house who has a pool. So I hope that you guys vote in favor of Kevin because Kevin teaches, does great with these kids. He gets it done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker? And just to give us a kind of an estimate of how many are interested in continuing to speak, can you please come forward to the very front and we can make sure to expedite it? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Hudson, H-U-D-S-O-N. I'm gonna be the odd man out. I'm not here for Kevin or the community. I do live in the neighborhood and I am here in favor of the project. I think it's simple. I think that there has been a determination made by the county through Lotto Research, by Mr. Clarade. And I want to emphasize what Mr. Clarade and Mr. Murphy both said. This is not a CCNR issue. County doesn't have purview over that. This is a land use issue and it's consistent with land use. And I think that that's where it needs to stay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Paul Pavletich, P-A-V-L-E-T-I-C-H. And I have had Kevin teach all three of my kids to swim. And currently I have a four-year-old that's gonna be going for the second of two weeks this summer. We've heard a lot, and I, and it's, we've heard a lot of positive and negative debates. I think all of us agree, swimming lessons is what is gonna save lives. I did something here that I thought about why, why, why people don't get swim lessons. And my, my first two kids went to group swim lessons and it was tough. But the one-on-one swim lessons that Kevin provides, all my kids now can swim great. They, they picked it up and it was, like one of our last speakers said, very peaceful. I was told by my wife, do not go. Don't go to this location. There's only one car that can be allowed there. Kevin was very deliberate in what he wanted you to do and how it was going to happen. I know there's people that don't like the idea of it, but I, I am in favor and I support you guys voting this through. I think that a lot of, a lot of the stats that we're hearing about kids with autism, just any kid, any death, any person that is found in the Kern River, it's just, it just, it breaks my heart. And I wish every kid could get swim lessons. And money-wise, it's, I know Kevin's not getting rich doing this because it's not, he's not doing it for the money. I heard $19,000 a week and I was like, man, I'm gonna start teaching swim lessons. But his dad taught me to swim almost 50 years ago. And Kevin doesn't have ethical dilemmas. And I, again, I can't say enough about passing this and let's, let's keep, let's keep kids alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name's Avery Edgeman, E-D-G-M-O-N. I am Kevin's daughter. Coming from a family that swims, it's really important, especially from children with autism. But to address the direct concerns of the opposed, the noise kind of surprised me. I know my dad can be loud, trust me, I've heard it my entire life. But I don't think it's to the point where he wouldn't be able to have a conversation with a child that's about two feet from him, especially coming and hearing from the parents. Like they had said, it's probably one of the most peaceful environments they've been to. In addition, to address the speculation of it being one-on-one in 15 minutes, as a personal experience of mine, living at that home, it absolutely is. I wake up in the morning, thankfully I get to sleep in, and I look out my window and there's my dad providing this life-saving skill for this child, one-on-one, with their parents sitting across the way in their chair underneath an umbrella. As his daughter, I have volunteered my time to help him in these lessons. So I have physically been inside of our pool with a child that I am observing him to understand and better, better acclimate to his teaching. So I can then teach children of my own or of others to better help them learn how to swim as well. That's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker? Anyone, anyone? Let's let him speak and then I'll ask for clarification.
Hi, sorry. My name is Mike Ross. Sorry, I'm a little shy. Boy, you guys get tough decisions to make all the time. I'm sure not just this one, but a lot of them. I don't envy you guys. I respect what you do. Tough job. Yeah, here it's, I've had two kids that had swim lessons, not with Kevin. Kevin wasn't doing it at the time. The person that taught my kids, it was, they moved to Arizona, so they're no longer here. But I can tell you the lessons came in great handy. We did have our small child fall in and they did just like the lessons teach of the kid rolled over on the back. They're very valuable. I'm sure the people in the community are great people. They just have a little bit of misunderstanding of the way that things go. You do, as you're dropping your kid or as you're coming in to get your kid, another person is leaving. So it can seem like it's a lot of traffic and stuff. But it, it really is a good thing what these swim coaches do. And as an accountant, I know it's tough to rent facilities and stuff. And sometimes the only way these things are gonna happen is with solutions like with what Kevin came up to. It's, it's actually really hard to come up with a pool. And you're only talking about, you know, two and a half months of the appropriate weather when you can do this. So it's a tough situation. So I hope you guys approve it and come up with conditions that make it work out for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional speakers? Were you interested in, Mr. Murphy, are we allowed to have a speaker come up for a second time?
Madam Chair, through the commission, that is, your chair's, your committee's prerogative whether you want to allow that.
Does the, okay. Anyone have any opposition? Okay, please come forward.
Again, I'm Chris Knight. And I'm sure Mr. Edgeman has one-on-ones also. I, I don't doubt that. When I said the $19,200, to clarify it, that's if he did four. But normally there's two or three. But I'm sure, I know there's one-on-one because I've heard babies scream bloody murder till I went in the house. But, and I'm sure he's a great swim coach. We're just asking it not be in our neighborhood because of the traffic and the wear and the tear. It's been private, it's been quiet. One of his people on there, he did a rambling thing about swimming on Facebook or TikTok. And one of the ladies said, oh, it was hard to follow it. It's so tranquil, the birds singing and all of that. And then this year she had something like really bad to say. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. There's a lot of money to be made. But we just wish you would not do it in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no movement, we're gonna close the public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions, comments, concerns. Anyone? The only thing I wanted clarification on is I know it's in our pocket. But Mr. Murphy, can you provide quick clarification on what CCNR is, since that was mentioned numerous times?
Sure, Madam Chair, through the commission. CCNR is your, I forget how to say it, covenants, restrictions, that's the other C. Yeah, so, you know, a lot of times, a developer or they will place certain conditions on residential tracks just to help identify the identity of the community, things along those lines. I mean, many times, they could be, you have to have your trees pruned a certain way, you know, you can't have certain things in front. You know, they're just the restrictions for the neighborhood that were not part of the overall decision-making process. I'm gonna be honest with you, some CCNRs that I have seen, I mean, they have things that are illegal. You can't do that anymore. So, you know, the county, and I'm not saying that this track does, of course, but I'm just saying that those are things that a developer, whoever creates that track, they're the ones that enter into and create these that many times are recorded as part of the overall project. As I said, some of the conditions and things that we have seen may go against what our zoning ordinance say. You know, the county, when it comes to our permitting, goes by our adopted land uses. And if there is a complaint, if there is a violation of the CCNRs, you know, there is a separate matter by which that can be taken. But the county doesn't actively get involved, review those other than for, you know, basic informations if they were on there. So that was kind of our, our response when it comes to, to some of that aspect of it. And again, I have not seen their adopted CCNRs or anything along those lines. So I couldn't, you know, comment on those. But in general, the practice is, is not something that the county is, is involved with. While I have the microphone, the only things I'd like to just other provide clarification for, and I could be wrong and Mr. Clarade or Mrs. Simon could correct me, I don't believe we have a condition that says no signage in terms of advertising for the business. If we don't have that, that's clearly something of your commission, based on comments and, and things that were stated, wanted to impose, is that, you know, he would not be able to include signage for the name or, you know, privately, you know, that's something that could potentially be included. I don't know if I had seen that. And then the other clarification I would just like to make is, Mr. Edgeman, I don't know the timing exactly, he did apply for a home occupation permit that was granted by the county. Our initial look at this was the belief that it did qualify for uses as a home occupation. For example, a hairdresser, as long as you have one chair, you know, those are home occupation permits that you could receive that don't require any discretionary actions. As comments started to come forward and as we looked at it a little more closely... As comments started to come forward and as we looked at it a little more closely, it was the county's determination that, based on our ordinance, home occupation permits are things that occur indoors. Clearly, this is a pool, and it is outdoor, which is part of the reason why we had said, you know, we can't be assured that it qualifies as a home occupation permit, which is why the county revoked the home occupation permit. So I just wanted to provide that context so that you know that, in my experience with this, Mr. Edgeman, once he started reaching out, you know, he was operating in what he believed was something that the county had said, and we did initially grant him a home occupation permit, which was later revoked, and that led to the processing of this conditional use permit.
Thank you. Another quick question. In the code, number seven, it's the conditional use permit will be valid for three years, and once it is expired, the applicant will be required to submit an additional application. It doesn't have a date on there, and so since he is a seasonal applicant, my concern is you're going to potentially only give him half of a season where it might expire. Is there a way to add a date to where it's either prior to a season or after a season for more clarification for him?
Sure, Madam Commissioner, through the chair, Madam Chairman. So there are dates on when he could operate, so that is listed in the conditions. So clearly, staff would interpret it as three seasons going through that date, which is last date in terms of which the operation could occur as currently provided, or as currently recommended by staff, goes from, what condition?
Yeah, I see it's.
August 31st, 2026. So the way that the condition is currently stated, that would be, that particular date would be the last date in which any swim lessons could occur without processing a new conditional use permit. Now it is. Is your commission's prerogative, if you believe four years is appropriate, if you believe it was permanent, if you believe two years was appropriate? I mean, all those are up to your commission and your deliberations in terms of what you think is or is not appropriate. But, you know, we could always provide some additional clarification, but if someone were to ask me right now, that third year would expire, August 31st, 2026, is how the county would interpret the conditions as currently written.
And he could apply for that permit before that date expires in order to allow it to continue on, correct?
He could. Now, in general, I would assume that he chose that date as that's generally the end of his season, and he wouldn't anticipate starting up again until the next year during the summer. But yes, he could even potentially apply after a second year and, you know, but again, intent of usually, staff's intent of putting a temporary is one, to allow them to get established, two, to allow enough time for both the applicant, the neighborhood, to kind of see how it works, and give enough time for your commission, when a potential permanent request comes in, to have enough information so that you're not kind of in the same spot. You would be having some considerations with some additional thoughts as, hey, these were the conditions we imposed last time. Are they working? Is it addressing their concerns? Is things along those lines?
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from fellow commissioners?
Quick clarification. On the, I'm seeing what the chair was seeing on the CCNRs, so I just wanted to read that line. I liked how that line was framed. Declaration of restrictions for residential communities are between the developer and property owners. That's outside of what we would be making decisions on at this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional questions, comments, or a motion?
So I would say, first of all, I appreciate everybody that came out. I appreciate the passion on both sides of this. It is a sticky situation. I do think that this comes back to land compatibility, and I'm comfortable that the county and the staff have done their job to assess and then ultimately make the recommendation to us that it's appropriate and compatible. I think in order to decrease the sense that this is becoming a commercial area, I do like something that you said, Mr. Murphy, which is, it's probably appropriate to restrict signage there. I mean, we want people to come and park in the right spot and not be encroaching on the neighbors, but we, I think also, don't want, you know, signs and billboards up there. So I would be interested, maybe if you could help us craft some language that would be appropriate for that situation. If I can get your help on that, Mr. Murphy?
Commissioner Ashley, through the chair. I believe the most appropriate condition would be to add 11F. 11 has to do with projects that the application has to continuously comply with. I believe a condition that specified at no time, should the project applicant be authorized to include any advertising or references, or sign references to the proposed swim lessons be authorized. And I think if you just leave it at that. A question, I'm just thinking in terms of directions, I mean, it is a sign that says swim lessons turn left is different than advertising. That could be taken out. We could also use the word permanent, but that is a question whether or not you want to have any directional signage. It is a public access privately maintained road, so that the county would not be going through to authorize any signage, but I do think that you should provide additional clarification. Clearly, you don't want any advertising, but whether or not you wanted or wanted to allow any directional signage to be used. And we can definitely use the words permanent, meaning that, you know, it's a something.
Seasonal thing.
Or that he puts out there. It's not, you know, in the ground or anything along those lines.
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate to give direction and to help people get to the right spot without, you know, being overt about the advertising piece. I think that makes sense.
So how about, in addition to what I had stated before, we can have a last sentence that says, non-permanent directional signage located on the proponent's drive approach shall be authorized. That would basically mean that it can't be in the right of way in terms of the, where there is the road or anything along those lines. You know, as you drive out, you're on the right side, the building's on the left, there's a drive approach that everyone would go to to access the site. So if the signage was maintained at that location, I believe would be able to be seen and not be located within any of the drivability area or even on the dirt outside area.
That makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. With that amendment, I'm prepared to make a motion in favor of the project with the proposed addition of condition 11F, you said, Mr. Murphy? I can't remember the number. Correct me on that one.
That is correct.
Okay, we have a motion?
Based on the fact that it's not a county road and CCNRs are outside of our area of purview, then I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We will vote on screen.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Is there a right to appeal for either of these items, Mr. Murphy?
Madam Chair, there is. So this case is a conditional use permit. So for projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. That appeal may be filed at the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $562 on forms we have available at the department and on our website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. I would just like to provide some additional clarification here, as a building permit most likely is not required. What this means is that no swimming lessons, no activity associated with this conditional use permit could effectively occur until that appeal process has expired. You know, Mr. Edgeman would be, over this time period, be providing any information needed to show that he's in compliance with all of these conditions. But again, just so that we're clear, this, he would not be able to have any one-on-one swim lessons at this location until after the appeal date has expired.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to item H adjournment. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for June 27th, 2024. Can I entertain a motion? Motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.